How are you?
Good.
David Wecaster.
Fred DeBale.
Good to meet you, Fred.
Nice to meet you.
David, Noah put you in the middle, so I didn't see you.
Yeah, thanks, Noah. We gotta be here about ten minutes and then I'm gonna be over at Will's.
You notice we're electing a chairman, Noah put you in the middle.
I know, I know. Now, I haven't put it off, because you weren't here last time. He was on the phone, so I wouldn't do it to you.
Typical Baptist thing, you're not here, you get that one of them to do this.
That's true, that's true, but I'm not a typical Baptist.
He is significant, he's southern Baptist.
That's right.
Well, the thing about Lutherans is they're not allowed to be chairman of anything.
Oh, yeah, yeah. No, Baptists have committees. They have two committees decide who's on the committee. And there's gotta be a million there, simply now.
Well, with Lutherans, you have to have, you know, your Jell-O, green Jell-O with, you know, pears in it, orange Jell-O with carrots in it and things.
We could make this like Speaker of the House, we go through random. Yeah, go three days. No, just don't do that. Where are y'all building the soccer conference?
Across from the Henry Fieldhouse.
Okay.
Down there, they got the pad grade today.
I thought, well, we went to people from Travelers, so you're down, we took them down, they're just showing, two of them, and they've seen the campus.
Yeah.
And I said, "That's got to be it."
That's it, sixty-four hundred square foot, donor-funded. It's crazy. Soccer park from this, they're into investment funds like David was thinking.
Yeah.
Crazy.
David, wanna give something else?
Yeah, I just kinda want... And, uh, we started work on civil design for a track and field facility.
Yeah, Buddy had told me that if you get out of Stadium Drive, we got dots. Yeah, Buddy told me where it was gonna be.
That wooded lot, we're looking at, uh...
Hold on.
We're looking at, um, making track and field.
Fred DeBale, Tom DeBale.
There you go. It's looking good, I'm telling you.
If we can just get kids. The track and field facility, what's interesting about that is we have fifty-one, fifty-two track and field houses right now. The maximum you can have is eighty-one. So, if you can get thirty more kids, because you've got this brand-new facility. At track and field, we're not like baseball, and you know a whole lot of scholarship.
Yeah.
I mean, a thousand dollars is a pretty good scholarship for kids.
They asked me, said, "Why'd they gotta develop them? You look, thirty-five people, look at what you're doing this year."
And they're in here, but they're playing today.
Yeah.
They getting experience and getting... Because the transfer portal is killing recruiting out of high school.
Jim told me he's lost his best two pitchers. But he's got, got a couple coming in, he thinks it's gonna really be good, so... Yeah, that's killing everybody.
So, you're the man with the gavel, hey?
Not for long.
We voted on him, he's gonna be. Can I go ahead and make him maybe right now?
When I didn't say that?
I was actually sitting here thinking, naturally, Alan is the interim chairman, and he's the one who's not here yet to gavel him.
Yeah, we did, but, um...
Oh, well, where did that, we need to move.
We did that, that was just interim.
It's been my experience when sitting on committees of boards, that the person who's not here is the person that gets farthest.
I thought they was gonna do it to me last week, that's why I called him.
They couldn't do it to him.
Hey, you can't do it.
But I wouldn't do it. He's got more experience on this stuff. He's used to having to do all this stuff.
I suppose we could always have a coup.
Well, what I told Tom was, it's talking about the House of Representatives, it doesn't fit me to even get around to voting.
I can.
Does the person actually have to be on the board to be the chairman?
That's a new question.
Or Jennifer doesn't, so... Noah?
We did have, um, to rearrange the agenda today, because we had a withdrawal. So, that rezoning notice that you all got, uh, in the packet, she withdrew yesterday. Or Friday.
Not moving forward with it?
No, they are not.
What was that one?
The Turner Trucking Depot, right down the road.
So, why would they not, why would they pull that?
She just said they didn't wanna move forward with rezoning it. I think they didn't want it to go to M1. I think they wanted it to go to B2.
B2 would be better.
B2 would be less restrictive.
Yes.
But that's not even an end, they don't make anything there.
It is under, I'm trying to think of what the ordinance says, it's under warehousing, and then one of them said something like truck depot.
Right now, it's B1, right?
Yep.
Yeah, it needs to be either B2 or something else.
Yeah. When I looked, it's, there's, well, they have like trucking on there, which I assumed we put in the ordinance just because of the Turner Trucking, and it was under M1. And I told her that, and she wanted it to go to B2, so...
Odd that she would pull it.
Yeah. I don't know.
Hmm, things that make you grow.
Yes, so...
You work at Garden Web, Tom. That's our motto up there.
Hmm, that's the motto every place I've worked, including very much.
Oh, wow.
Wow. Didn't know that could happen.
See, hmm, oh, wow.
I had actually forgot who owned that land down there.
Kitty.
Yeah, I knew, I knew.
Yes, she does, and, um, I think part of that had to do with the land use plan, which you'll see tonight, has that area designated, um, neighborhood node, rather than industrial, and so that's something that... Is it what it is? Central business, I couldn't remember what it was. I remember it being red, but I couldn't remember what red it was. So, yes, central business, it's not neighborhood node, 'cause it's not the neighborhood.
You don't want me to like read word for word this whole plan, do you?
I didn't, I didn't look at it, bitch.
I don't even need to read the bold, just the bold print.
It has a PowerPoint, so that'll make it Cliff's Notes, very easy.
There you go.
It's how I got through Garden Web.
I want you to read it at some point, but I don't need to listen to you read.
We had an interesting sermon Sunday at church.
There comes the chairman.
Oh, I told him, I said, "We gotta wait for the chairman to get here to gavel us in."
Oh, no. Hey, how are you? You said Alan LaPorter. Nice to meet you.
You are actually still the chairperson today. We can't really burn, hell, we're in there. We have to call the meeting, though.
No, no, you're...
And then we're gonna burn.
No, you have to call us to order, you're the end, and you will vote.
All right.
According to the rules.
All right. Then I'll decline. I know that you can decline, Alan, I think you declined last meeting. All right. Call us to order, then. Five thirty-three, probably give them that one.
Where Mr. DeBale in first?
All right, let's do that.
So, you just wanna stand and rise, and raise your right hand, and I'll read it to you? I, Fred DeBale, de solemnly and sincerely swear that I will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith, and that I will faithfully discharge that it is in my office as a member of the Town of Boilin Springs Board of Planning and Adjustments, that held me up.
I do.
They probably brought in my one opinion.
Just one? I don't know what you're saying, you're a little...
Your hand?
Uh-uh. My wife couldn't let me hammer anything.
All right. Swearing a selection of the chairperson and vice-chairperson? Do we have a nomination?
David Wecaster.
Second?
You're just gonna do the Baptist thing, huh?
Yeah.
Keith Dixon me, huh?
Yeah. We'll get, we'll get to vote.
Yep. All right, everybody in favor?
Are we doing electronically?
Either way, you tell me.
What are you asking me for? He's the chairman.
I'm both yay.
All right.
See? Good job. Thank you, sir.
So, now we need a vice-chairman?
Yep.
And I nominate Alan.
Second.
Yep, he's doing, doing good.
All in favor? As have it. The minutes for the September nineteenth planning board meeting, has anybody had a chance to review that? Any questions or corrections that need to be, uh, made? And there is none, so, uh, I don't think we have to vote on that, do we? Do we? Okay. So, do we have a...
Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor, signify aye.
Aye.
And now, we've come to the public comments. Anybody, I don't see anybody from the public. So, we will move right on to our regular business, to our land use plan update, so we'll ask staff how we'll proceed with the land use plan update.
Thank y'all for being here tonight. We contracted before I got here, so that was back... Yeah, January, March, with Bolton Mink, which is a consultant group, and this is Andrew, he is our project manager, is that right?
That's right.
So, he, um, works out of their Charlotte office, and he has led the team on crafting our land use plan. And so, we're excited to have him here tonight, and then hopefully, um, we'll get it to you guys tonight, and then make revisions as necessary, and it will go to council at their November fourteenth meeting.
So, what are our actions tonight? To review it and then vote to forward it, or...
Review, vote to forward it, or vote to forward it with changes.
Okay. Just wanna make sure, I know what we're supposed to be doing.
Yes, sir. So, when they redid the general statutes in twenty nineteen, they required that if a town wants to have zoning rights, we have to have a land use plan. Our last land use plan was from two thousand nine.
It has to be reasonably updated, land use plan.
So...
I love the air quotes.
Yes, we felt that... Fourteen years, it's probably not reasonably updated, so...
Under the community, their last citywide plan was in nineteen eighty-three, so they decided that was not reasonably updated.
Probably not reasonable.
Eighty-three was a good... Still playing good league.
I got married in eighty-three.
It was a great year.
You say eighty-three?
Yeah.
That's the year I got married.
Yeah, me too.
It was a great year.
It's the year I moved to Baltimore.
I don't think it was a good...
No, I'm sorry, go ahead, we were just...
Yeah, we're just chatting, sorry.
Cleveland, Ohio was where I grew up.
Okay.
Will the clicker still work while I can tell you? Okay. The board is not connected. I did, I did think about that.
Oh, there it is.
Okay.
Like I say, do we even have a vote on whether to use it or not?
Okay, towards you, that's the trade, not TV towards you, so, okay, there we go. Sorry about that, it's nice to meet all y'all. Like Zach said, my name's Andrew Bab, just wanna walk you through kind of how we developed the land use plan update, what's included in it, and talk about what the remaining steps are, as opposed to go through this. So, maybe, I might have to tell you to, to hit it.
Say ding.
Yeah. There we go. So, what's the land use plan? Land use plan is a framework and a vision that's twenty-plus years of the town's future, with the goals and policies for development of the town, and things I think is really important, because these are intended to be guides for everybody who's involved in the development of the town, not just for the town itself, but for developers, investors, other people who are making decisions for the town, um, into the future. Um, as we just mentioned, we're updating this, um, to two thousand and nine plan, in large part to comply with state regulations, to have a reasonably up-to-date land use plan for the town, um, but when we do these things, we try to take advantage of the opportunity in the moment, to develop a community-led vision for the town that hopefully is helpful to everybody, um, in making decisions into the future, as in both the public and private.
So, if we see something, are we supposed to interject?
I, I don't mind if you interject.
I don't have any paper up here, nobody didn't give us paper today. Could, go back one slide? And this is my OCD, could you update that picture? The Town of Boilin Springs suns?
So, that is the old plan's cover, so that's just...
Oh, so that's your old cover, okay, sorry.
That's how I figured the old plan was.
Wow.
Absolutely. That's the old plan's cover, um, we're just showing there to catch, show where, what we're starting from, I guess.
Okay.
Uh, it's like, we were talking about, we've been at this since, really since March, um, we started with some analysis, just looking at some conditions, using data, from U.S. Census Bureau, um, and some other sources. In June, we met with the dedicated stakeholder committee and with the public, uh, for our first kind of round of public engagement. We had an online survey that was also open for about a month after that, to get more information from, from the entire community. Through the summer, we took that and had to develop some of the draft information that's in the document, that I'll walk through in a minute. Uh, we came back to our stakeholder group, and the public again in September, we just wrapped up a virtual engagement, no opportunity, basically with all the planned information for them to look at as well. So, today, we're here with y'all for planning board, and then as Zach said, we'll be the council in November. Uh, we wanna talk a little bit about what we heard in that engagement. It's in June, had the, the community here, had a joint meeting with the Park Master Plan, had about forty people who came to that. We built an online survey that asked really very similar questions, included a map activity, left it open for about, uh, we got almost a hundred responses to that, which is pretty good, especially for a town of this size, that's probably less than that for communities three and four times, um, population of Boilin Springs. So, we came back in September with a lot of the information I'm gonna show y'all now. Got about twenty people there with the information on survey, we've had a handful of responses to that as well, a little bit less. What we heard, at the beginning, we had a lot of information from those, you know, a hundred-plus people in the first round, but here are just some major themes that we saw, and on the feedback that we received, we got a lot of people talking about how much they love the small-town feel of Boilin Springs, how family-friendly the community is, um, but we did also see a desire for maybe a little bit of growth, um, within reason, a little bit of control, that they were looking for more businesses, a lot of talk about things like restaurants and cafes, things to do after work, um, kinds of businesses here. Also, um, especially I think because apartments are planned, it's also going at the same time, a lot of talk about the park, about public spaces, especially having something for different age categories, some of those comments, people who said, "We need something for teenagers," some of them, "We need something for retirees to do," um, but just a lot of kind of those comments about different age groups, and make sure that they have facilities and things to do in the evening. There's also a lot of talk about infrastructure in general, but I think in particular about biking and walking, about better sidewalks, other sidewalk ramps, um, park facilities, things like that. And so, I wanna talk a little bit about the plan, um, contains, things organized into a number of elements, as is shown on the left side of the screen there, economic development, land use and community design, housing, transportation, recreation and open space, historic cultural inherited preservation enhancement, and public services and infrastructure. Within each of those elements in the plan document itself, we have a quick discussion of existing conditions, just of where the town is today, policies that are on the books, previous plans that have been done, um, and then each of those has a goal for that element, uh, each of those goals is supported by a number of objectives, which are a little more specific, um, and action-oriented, and then each of those are supported in turn by a number of action items, action items are things for the town to do, or partner organizations to do, to help move the town towards that ultimate vision that we heard from the community. Ethan, thank you. Okay, so there's, um, with low, and I didn't wanna read all of those goals, objectives, and action items, um, tonight, but I love if y'all took a look at them and gave us any feedback that you have. One thing I do wanna spend a little time on, especially this planning board, is the character. So, one of the things, a plan like this is required to have, this is called a future land use map, that explains kind of geographically, because it's what we want to do in the future. Um, so, we've divided, we've updated the previous, we've got a land use map here, um, and that's organized into a number of different areas. We've got centers, which are where most of the commercial activity and kind of retail activity happens, residential areas, below that, um, where people live, different types of residential areas, depending on infrastructure and other connectivity concerns, we have employment areas, and we have environmental reasons. I'm gonna go through each of these one at a time, and kind of talk about what each of them contains, and we'll roll them for, uh, probably. So, central business district, there's where we are right now, um, this is downtown Boilin Springs, it's the traditional core of the community, so we're looking at things like shops, restaurants, um, other commercial uses, and we've added kind of the possibility of some residential uses, if they're built in a way that is connected to, conducive with the feeling of downtown Boilin Springs. Um, in addition, there's a couple of other commercial areas, really kind of on the core corners, you know, down college in either direction, down main in either direction, um, we think there's opportunities for, for smaller commercial or mixed use. That image in particular is a little more intense than we're thinking, but I think it does a good job of showing, we're thinking about commercial uses that are well-connected with the neighborhoods behind them. Uh, we're not thinking about just a shop that just sits on the main road, but maybe it also has a connection to the neighborhood behind it, so that people have an easier way to get to goods and services and jobs, um, and things like that. These areas probably primarily retail, maybe restaurants, maybe a couple of services, things like that, um, potentially if the developer really wanted to, you could integrate some townhomes or other residential options as well. So, getting into the residential uses, we've got three levels, we've got low, medium, and high, those are really tailored to Boilin Springs. Low-density residential are the areas on the outskirts of town, um, out in the ETJ, and these are, you know, almost entirely single-family detached homes, um, lots up to an acre, maybe even more than an acre in a lot of situations, um, maybe there's also civic community uses, parks, churches, things like that, that are compatible with residential use. Generally, it's a low-density, primarily residential area. In medium-density residential, these are the areas that are close to town, where we have infrastructure, we have sewer, we have good road connectivity, things like that. This is still probably primarily single-family detached homes, the law sizes are probably a little bit smaller, 'cause you're in town, you're in a subdivision, something like that, um, maybe occasionally you get a development that was a duplex, or two, something of that order, again, the civic communities are still compatible in these areas, so we listed that as well. And we have just a couple of areas that were called high-density residential, these are typically maybe smaller law, single-family homes, maybe townhomes, duplexes, things of that order, these are primarily really close to downtown, uh, especially as was laid out in downtown master plan, gave this to be compatible, or to, to include the recommendations of that plan, um, and a couple of other areas where you do have the small apartment complexes and things like that. But those areas, again, are really close to downtown, relatively small areas, um, we tell them to go over there. And we've got two employment areas, one's the traditional and civic, the, this really includes a lot of Garden Web, this includes the Y, I mean, you have, these are uses that are more maybe, you know, community-oriented in nature, uh, or have campuses, larger footprints like that, that are really, you know, usually master-planned internally. And we've also got industrial, there's a couple of industrial facilities in and around the town, we've called those out, um, as well as a separate area, usually larger law, good access to roads, things like that. And there's one final group, that's the public space and farmland preservation, this includes a lot of the area in the ETJ, these are really large law homes, generally, we're hoping that these areas become conservation areas, continue to be agriculture, um, are not developed or very low intensity residential, so that's all laid out around the periphery of the town. But I'm happy to take any questions on all of that, but what we're doing right now is we've got some comments from Zach on the document, looking for comments from the script as well, but as Zach said, we're looking towards November council adoption of the document. So, happy to take any questions upon that one.
I don't have any questions, it's a well-prepared presentation. I like how you broke it down into each, um, residential and, and density zones, um, so it was fairly self-explanatory. The only thing I would say is it's hard to see, you're getting old, so maybe when you do it with the, uh, town council, you, you provide it on their, on their screen where they can see it, 'cause I, I'm sitting here going, especially when you got to the map, I was like...
The one thing I've also done, if we want to, the council, I brought it on board, is like a little point, say each of the areas that these things are in.
That would be great.
Yeah, we can do that for council.
Yeah, that would be...
Anybody else got any questions?
I don't.
I thought it was a good presentation.
Yeah.
Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew.
Uh, so, the rezoning has been extended?
Yes.
Okay, so we're down to planning board training?
Is there a motion to recommend?
Oh, sorry.
No, you're fine.
Uh, so, we have a motion on the presentation that we've heard tonight, uh, I think, and staff was referring to, uh, a motion to proceed, or a motion to proceed with changes, didn't think we had anything, so is there a motion to proceed?
Motion to proceed, uh, when the current land use plan is presented to the board.
Now, second, a motion, second. All those in favor, signify aye.
Aye.
So, the ayes have it, move forward with that. Andrew, you did a good job, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thanks, Andrew. Andrew is gonna go on and leave, 'cause he lives in Charlotte, and I thought he didn't have to stay for the training.
Okay, can we move on to the next?
The state wants us to start putting you all through trainings, but they don't want me to call them that, they want me to call them professional development, because that sounds nicer, so...
Okay.
It's a farce, it's a training, sorry, get all my papers straight.
Training is a farce, or just calling it something else?
Calling it a professional development is...
Gotcha.
...a farce.
Okay, just wanna make sure.
That they just said that calling it a workshop or a training makes it...
If it's gonna be a workshop, we gotta get a will out of this.
It sounds too cumbersome, people don't wanna deal with those. Do they like professional developments? Does that make us feel better?
That's all in the name.
We put it on the resume.
That's right. Tonight, we are doing quasi-judicial, and I promise, it looks like a lot, but it... And all of this stuff, if we ever encounter it, um, I'm gonna stand up, 'cause I don't...
We'll share it if we need to.
I don't think they probably, they aren't that worried about it either.
Nope.
Okay, so, and the writing's in white, because I make court decisions.
That's got to be...
Wanted to test your eyes. So, um, the planning board is an advisory board that advises our town council on decisions relating to land use. And so, typically, ninety percent of the time, y'all are gonna sit as the planning board, but sometimes, we have to sit as the board of adjustment, okay? We've recently redone our planning board ordinance, that is, that establishes you all, and we did that last month at the town council meeting, so if some of you have updated terms, congratulations. There are six of you total, um, Karma is just not here. Six. For some reason, I was thinking, we decided seven.
We did, but we have a vacancy.
Okay, that's why I was messing up. So, there are seven of you, you all are now the board of adjustment. So, it used to be that there was a formula where it was the, the two ETJ members, and the chairman and the vice-chairman, and somebody else was on the board of adjustment, and now you're all just on it, because the statute doesn't... It regearies, it makes it easier.
I don't think I was on the board of adjustment or something.
Yeah, we had, we had you sent over to the side one time.
Yeah.
Yeah, I didn't understand that.
The board of adjustment is the quasi-judicial function of the planning board, and it has to, you, that's why I have a wall up there, that's what that is, that's a wall, and you step beyond the wall, and you have to take off your regular planning board hat, and you have to put on a different hat and judge rope, because you go from being a legislative board to being a quasi-judicial board. And so, that's why in the old rule, there was that formula to determine who got to be on there and who didn't, and then if you weren't on the board, you satisfied what they called an alternate, but we don't have to do any of that anymore, so they've moved past... But we don't have to do any of that anymore, so they've moved past all of that. And so this last month, NOAA cleaned all that up with a resolution to council. Did it work? It did. Whether it did on the clicker or whether it did because you clicked, I don't know. So when we step behind the wall and we put on our quasi-judicial hat, all that means is we're kind of judicial, we're kind of not, okay? You're not because you're not judges, but you are because you're actually going to make a judicial decision. And when we're behind the wall, the decisions that you all make don't get appealed to council. They actually get appealed to the superior court judge because you're a judicial body, not a legislative body anymore. Does that make sense? Okay. So unlike legislative decisions, which are made based on individual preferences, quasi-judicial decisions have to be made based on statutory and ordinance. We can't just pick a preferential standard, okay? So they are a bit higher in degree, and that's what makes them judicial. So all, and this is on your paper, all quasi-judicial hearings have to have elements, and the only ones that I put on there are material substantial and competent because deliberations are public. Well, you know that. They have had some trouble with that, I will say, in the eastern part of the state. When they're deliberating and talking about a land use, the board wants to have that not open to the public. They would rather recuse themselves or go back and go to a closed session, and we can't do that, so that's on there. Competent evidence, material evidence, substantial evidence, we're going to talk about in a second. On the record, so just like in a court proceeding, NOAA becomes the stenographer and has to create the official record of what's going on, and it's exactly what you imagine a court becomes. So then in this scenario, I take the form of the prosecutor and the defendant is the person bringing you the variance application or the special use permit or the certificate of appropriateness. And we'll talk about those in a second because those are the only three things you're going to do with the board of adjustment. Or they're appealing my decision, and if they do that, then I'm the prosecutor in that form too. They have all their due process rights that are afforded by the Fourth and Fifth Amendment, so they have to be able to face their accuser. Both sides have to be able to cross-examine witnesses. So in quasi-judicial hearings, we have to bring witnesses. We can't just take written testimony. That can't be entered into the record unless it's expert testimony, and then it gets a little bit different. And then we have to do conflict of interest disclosures and ex parte communications. And we're going to work through that. That's what the other pieces of paper are for. The ones got like a rough outline, and the other ones are some discussion questions. But like if you bump into somebody and they say, you know, well, and we can use Kitty's property as an example because if she didn't agree with my determination, then she could come to you all and say, I don't agree with Zach, he was wrong, my property should be zoned, whatever, right? Maybe she wants it institutional. And so she would present that evidence to you all, and then I would say, no, I don't agree with that, this is why. And we could call witnesses, we could both interview them, we could talk to people about what's happening there, and it all takes place in this room in the actual hearing. But if you ran into Kitty at the grocery store and y'all had talked about it before, that's an ex parte communication that would need to be disclosed. Or if your neighbor said, I don't think that should be zoned, that y'all need to let this happen, or y'all need to put this there, those are ex parte, which just means it's out of the meeting, and you have to disclose all of that information. Does that make sense?
Yeah, don't talk to people at the grocery store.
That's usually my policy anyway.
That's a caper.
Better not see my wife at the grocery store. She can talk to everybody.
So there are three statutory definitions we have to apply to anything that's quasi-judicial. Competent is their word, but it just means trustworthy. So if it's not trustworthy, if it comes from your neighbor, then it's not competent because they are not trustworthy. And I don't mean that in a way that may sound rude, but if I wrote a piece of paper in here that just says, you know, Billie Jean said she wants that property institutional, well, Billie Jean has no expertise. You won't even know that Billie Jean's real, right? I just have that on a piece of paper. And so that is what we consider an incompetent record or piece of evidence.
Those are incompetent.
Now, it can also be reliable, trustworthy, reliable, interchangeable almost. Material means related to the standard that we're applying. So if Billie Jean came in here and gave testimony about why I say that Kitty's thing or her piece of property should be M1, Billie Jean comes in and says, no, I think it should be residential. Well, that's not material of what we're talking about because Kitty says it should be institutional and I'm saying it should be manufacturing. Well, residential's not even on the table. So Billie Jean's just, she's not even near what we're trying to talk about, so that's immaterial. Substantial means that it's going to help you support your conclusion. It's just something that can go into the record that we can then add to help you decide in one way or the other that we either want to override my decision or we want to agree with the variance or issue that special use permit, okay? Why are we having these? So the first one is because they think that I screwed up, which I do only have. They disagree with the finding, or they say, well, my business is B1, Zach says that it's B2. Or my business is B2, and I don't want it to be B1, but because that's a higher density and it increases the level of regulation, but Zach says that's what it has to go to. The only way that that number three will come up is if they petition us for rezoning. So the general statute says that we can ask them what they want to be rezoned, but we do not have to do what they say. So in theory, if, you know, we wanted to rezone the town hall and say, we want to ask y'all to rezone it and make it business one, and y'all say, no, really, it doesn't fit business one, it's more institutional because that's got a civic purpose, you are not beholden to the applicant to pick what they say. You can pick whatever you want using your judgment because that's why you all, that's the legislative function that the planning board has. And so when you're, they're appealing my decision to you, we're asking for your judgment and applying the standard of the district. Does that make sense? So that's why it's different. You won't get a lot of those. You'll get a lot more of the developmental approvals. So anytime we do a variance, it goes through this process. Anytime we do a special use permit, it goes through this. We will not do certificates of appropriateness, but I have to talk to you about that. But we won't do it. Sorry. Quasi-judicial hearings function as trials, already told you this. Applicants is the defendant, the town is the prosecutor, y'all are the jury. Most of them require simple majorities, but variances require an 80% supermajority, so it has to be four fifths of the seven of you, which ends up being six because it's, what, We can't have 0.6 of a vote. All right, variances. I know you can't read that. It's okay. I put pictures on here just because of what it makes me think of. So there's only four reasons why we can give somebody a variance. Reason number one is that a strict application of the ordinance would cause them an undue hardship. And so that's what the little mania is there with the stick. That's a strict application of our regulation would cause them an undue hardship. If we can check that box, we go to number two. It's asked to meet all four. So then number two says the hardship results from conditions that are peculiar to the property. And we'll talk about what that means more in a second. Three is that they didn't do something that's not a self-inflicted hardship. And then four gives you all the four reasons why, or the three reasons why you should pick how you can say, okay, this is fine. NOAA, I don't know what's happening. Yes?
I've only been on the, done this once for the judicial board, and when we did it, we voted on each one of the four. Is that a requirement or do you just say, okay, take these four things into consideration and then vote?
It has to meet all four.
It has to meet all four, but do we have to vote on each individual one?
Not necessarily, not unless you just want to. But if, because if it doesn't hit the threshold for all four of them, then we can't grant the variance.
I understood that. I just wondered, my question was procedurally, would you vote all at once or...
We can or we don't have to. That's more of a...
Preference?
Yes, for whatever you all decide.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. A variance is any deviation in the ordinance. And so anytime that we deviate from what the ordinance says, then that blurs that line between the planning board and the council because the council is the legislative body. So they're the ones who have to write the ordinance. If we are changing in the planning board, then that affects to a rewriting of the ordinance. Does that make sense? And so they want us to really steer away from variances. So if we get an applicant who, you know, maybe they, they want a particular use in an area that is not allowed. So I want to open a doctor's office in the middle of a highway, right? No, that's not allowed. And they say, well, can I have a variance? No, because that would be us rewriting that ordinance to allow that use, and we don't legislate. We just advise council, and then they would make the ultimate decision. In the quasi-judicial function, we can't legislate at all, not even in an advisory capacity. And so that's why it says the UDO is the ordinance that contains all the development and building standards for the town and the ETJ. They can be amended in two ways. Way number one, which is council. Way number two is an ordinance. That's why the standard for, I'm sorry, a variance, that's why the standard for variances is so high. Because what we are doing in effect, whenever we approve a variance, is we're taking that legislative power from the council and we are changing the ordinance somehow. Does that make sense?
No. Question?
Yeah.
So that's, if we would do, if we would approve a variance, that's not us making a recommendation to council?
No.
So it's just, it's us making the act, doing the action itself?
Yeah, but if it meets all four requirements?
Right.
Then we're saying there was an undue hardship, it was outside of their control.
If we determine, does it meet all that?
But that variance only applies to that one instance?
Yes, it applies to the one property and then...
Specific.
If there's an appeal of that variance, then it would go to the superior court.
Superior court judge.
Yep. And so then the issue with this is towns across the state are being sued for issuing variances. Because if you issue variances continuously, on the one hand, from the staff governmental side, if we're continuously issuing variances, it tells me as your town planner that we need to change the ordinance because nobody's following it and it's either too strict or there's something wrong with it. But then two, it's very easy to claim for a business owner or property developer to say, oh, well, you're giving ordinances to all these people, why don't I get one?
Right.
And so there have been several court cases where towns have had to pay damages and reparations essentially, business owners' costs incurred because of the issue.
We don't want to be later set in precedent, but...
Yeah. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
The, in the town, oh, y'all are the, we already talked about this. Y'all are the board of adjustment two, and we talked about the different functions, and so then there's that again. Now we'll go through the meetings that got ahead of the power. So the first one, unnecessary hardships would result from a strict application of the ordinance, right? We don't want to crush people with our ordinance, and so if our ordinance is going to cause something that's unnecessarily difficult for them, for whatever reason, and we'll look at some examples of that in a little while. From a strict application, then we're going to potentially need to relax that, right? That's just the first hurdle, but that's usually our clue. Is that okay? Eh, maybe that is, that is too difficult. Maybe that property will never be able to work because of that hardship, and we'll talk about why. The hardship results from conditions that are peculiar, such as the location size and topography. This is, they call this the black sheet provision because these properties are on the side of the mountain. Or maybe it has terrible erosion, or it's in the middle of the flood plain, right? Those are things that are topographically wrong with it, that it doesn't matter what I do to my property, I can't help it. Okay? But the second part of this, hardships resulting from personal circumstances, as well as hardships that are conditions common to the neighborhood or general public are not the basis of a variance. Because when we start accounting for personal circumstances, we move closer to that legislative function. Because in this, it's a trial and a public hearing, so our heartstrings don't play a role in that, right? It's about the piece of property, not about the individual or their individual issue. That's an issue for council that goes through the legislative process. We're just looking at the standard or the ordinance or the statute and applying that equally to everybody. Does it move on your screen now?
It does.
Okay. Sorry, I didn't, I couldn't decide if it was, if it was me or what. They came back and added this afterwards. So ADA, the American Disability Act, has a provision for that second part there that talks about topographical issues. If they have a disability, that is not considered a personal circumstance. So we have to accommodate that disability. So like if they want to put a ramp in front of their house because they are in a wheelchair, that is not considered a personal circumstance because we can't consider personal circumstances. We can't consider people with disabilities. They ended up having to add that because of ETJ. The hardship doesn't result in the actions taken by the applicant or the property owner. So that's just, you can't shoot yourself in the foot, right? If I divide up my property into a weird triangle and now it doesn't meet any setbacks, that was my fault, right? That's my issue. So that's not the town's problem, right? I need to go back to my surveyor and say, okay, I messed up on this, so let's do something different. Does that make sense? The first three reasons are the unnecessary hardship provisions, and their job is to protect the town and to protect our ordinances because if they become too relaxed and they really don't mean anything. And then the fourth option, I think of it as the key. So it's the key to open the gate so that we can actually get the variance. Because the fourth option's going to give us, okay, we've gotten through the unnecessary hardship pieces, we, if we get through numbers one through three, we know there's an unnecessary hardship, but now we have to figure out what specific kind we can pluck out so that we can actually give them their variance. And they list these and they call them the additional standards, which maybe we'll look at in a second. So they have to be consistent with the spirit, purpose, and intent of the regulation. They also, oh, well, it's really in order, or public safety is secure, or substantial justice is achieved. So if we were issuing the variance, I would need you to tell me, we're giving this variance due to the unnecessary hardship, blah, 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 because it's consistent with the spirit, purpose, and intent of the regulation, or it is to secure public safety, or it is to achieve substantial justice. Does that make sense? But we have to tell them why because then if we do go to court, we can say to the superior court judge, we're here because this achieves substantial justice. And they would say, okay, that's in the statute, so check. Does that make sense?
So who represents the town if it goes to the superior court?
The town attorney, yes. Josh with us. And then I would have to go too. So we might bring all y'all with us. And they say, well, we'll just bring the whole plan, the whole board of adjustment, just bring them all.
I'm not that big. And buy them lunch then.
Yeah, lunch will be on the town if that happens. We'll just add that to John's bill because if that ever happens, we'll countersue legal fees, so we'll just let John bill him for that too. Variance is to have to all four, so that writing is just the exact same stuff we've already read, but it has to meet all four criteria. It can't only meet one, it can't only meet two, it has to get all four. So it doesn't get through all four, it doesn't make it, and that one just shows you it doesn't get through four, so that variance fails. I think some examples, so obviously the first one up here where it says variance application one, that one's got X's all the way across, so we know that one fails. I think some examples, so obviously the first one up here where it says variance application one, that one's got X's all the way across, so we know that one fails. Right? The second one has a check for consistency and a check for statutory, uh, substantial justice. Oh, it's statutory justice. Substantial justice, but it didn't get the public safety, so nope, didn't make it. Right? And then the same thing for the third one. All right. I'm sorry, we're almost done, I promise. They had to come back and add some statutory clarifications to clear this up because it was, it was already, it wasn't muddy enough. And the state likes it when it's clear as mud. So the first thing is what's called a use variance. We can't do this. This is the situation that I told you about with the doctor's office in the middle of a high plane. Right? We can't change a use and just permit that wherever we want. Because then that gives you all the legislative function. And that's not what we do, right? So we can't do that. We need to take that through the proper channel. If they want to add a doctor's office use to an R twenty district, then that needs to go to council and they can amend the ordinance. Was that your question?
Well, yeah, that was my question. The quasi judicial would not handle that. But as the planning board, we would make a recommendation to the council.
Yep.
As to.
To amend that section of the ordinance.
Yep. Okay.
But since we're, we're behind the law, we can't, we don't do that. And so, this is, this has been illegal since nineteen eighty-five. That's not new. But you would be amazed at the number of people who are getting sued for this. I mean, it's like a constant. Um, we're on listservs as part of the, the UNC School of Government puts together all these listservs and so we get emails and there's people every day that are getting sued for issuing use variances. So they're hitting this really hard because, again, it's been illegal since nineteen eighty-five because it usurps the power of council. You know, if we could issue use variances and we really wouldn't need them to do anything land wise, y'all could just do it. Does that make sense? Uh, the second one talks about, do y'all remember when we had to do reasonable use statements? Decide if y'all will remember that or not. That was back in two thousand nineteen. They've gotten rid of those, so don't even worry about it. But you, we used to have to say, this variance is fine because its reasonable use is blank. And they threw that out, said, don't worry about that anymore. So that was a good move. The third one is complicated. Uh, because it says that purchasing a property, knowing that it requires a variance, does not count as a hardship.
Right.
So, not as a self-created hardship, I'm sorry. So, when we're looking at the list of variances, I could apply, I could look at a piece of property that's a triangle. And I could say to my wife, Madeline, we can buy that land and I can't build a house there, but I can get a variance for that property. And I can come to you all and that will make it through. Because that cannot be a disqualifying factor. Now that seems to go against the whole nature of the three things I just talked.
Makes any sense.
It does not.
So if you owned that property and just came in, we couldn't do the variance. But if you buy the property.
Yep.
Bought the property, we could give you the variance.
Yes.
Yeah, you'd think you'd go back to the, to the original owner.
Yeah.
The owner decides he wants to expand something, he's going to get within the setback rule.
Right.
You know?
Yeah, it's.
Are there any rules to who, just going off on a tangent there? Like if the person owns it, they can't get the variance, but they sell it to their wife?
At that time. I mean, I could, so I could say, Madeline, there's a triangular lot that I want to put a house on. But I can't get a variance because it's in my name. I sell it to Madeline for a dollar. She comes in and says, I bought it and at the time that I purchased it, and it says, I knew that it would require a variance and that is not a self-created hardship according to the statute. So you cannot count that against me.
That makes no sense.
No.
High school in state.
That just seems like it, well, that's what I, it's typical.
Well, how about the consequences?
It's a legislator that knew that.
I was, I was working on this last night at home. Missed that last slide up and I'm like, I didn't. And she's like, yes, you did. And I said, no, Madeline, that's what it says. It doesn't make sense. That's what it says.
Good to know.
Because it just invalidates everything that we just worked on. All right. Anything about variances?
No, other than there's a back door.
There is. I'm sorry, I'm trying to hurry, I promise.
Yeah, old boy.
Yeah. Special use permits are easier. Y'all, y'all done these before?
I have.
Special use permit?
I don't remember.
There's certain things that the town, that when we wrote, well, when we, when the town corporately wrote the zoning ordinance, council said, hey, we want to make sure that any of these uses come to town, somebody somewhere is making sure that they fit in with the character of the neighborhood, that they are not going to be disruptive, they're not going to hurt public safety. The prime example of that, and I had to prep Noah for this in advance, is a strip club.
Did you do research?
Sexually ordered businesses tonight, so just don't get.
His face got awful red.
It did. You gotta like his dedication. Yes.
So is that praying hands or is that the high heel? I thought maybe you were praying that we were going to get one.
Yeah, that's, well, that's what we need next to the vape shops, is a couple strip clubs. Probably between them. So.
By the way.
Danger of public safety. So these are much easier because we, we cannot usurp the legislative function.
Right.
I don't mean that in the way that like, oh, y'all on principle, we just can't do that because that's bad. I mean, you literally can't do it. Like you cannot take that from them because they've already given it to you. So you can't take it away because you already have it. Because in this one, the, the council has already written out in our table of permitted uses. They have little S's. All of those are special use permits. And so when any of that comes in, council's already told me through that ordinance, all that goes to the Board of Adjustment. So if it doesn't come to council, we just divert all that right on over. Like if they want to put in a landfill. Right? That's something that we need to look at more intensely than just me looking at a zoning form. Right? We need to have a hearing and a trial and talk about that a little bit. So the first one, it can't materially endanger the public health and safety. Has to meet all the conditions and specifications and you all can put relevant specifications on those properties. Um, so if we wanted to tell them that they have to have a privacy ban, so we could do that. If we wanted to tell them they have to have a landscaping barrier, we can do that. It has, we cannot, the property cannot substantively injure the value of adjoining properties.
Well, that just ruins out a lot of things.
It does, yes. And so then how do we know what is a, a substantively, what substantively injures property? They would have, the burden of proof is on them, not on us. So we don't call witnesses. They do. So they would have to come in here and say, this is a real estate appraiser, not a Realtor, a real estate appraiser. The Realtors, they've determined, don't meet the threshold. So this is a real estate appraiser and they, he says it will affect property values like this. And then they have to submit to the record some kind of form or documentation where they perform a study that says this will not affect property values.
So some supporting documentation?
Yes. And all of that has to go into the record that Noah keeps.
Can we require more than one, uh, appraiser?
Yeah.
Well, you probably, you probably get one from the, from the whoever's applying for it, but also the town. And since there's two, there's a prosecutor and a defendant.
If I.
Come in here and say that.
If we ever go through this, we will have our own.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
Because I, I won't necessarily, I mean, if, if I'm paying that guy to tell me that this isn't going to damage property values and that's better be what he says.
Right.
You know, that's, so that would be my thing. You know, they're only going to bring in somebody who's going to agree with them.
Yep.
Uh, and then the last part, this is where y'all get the broad sweeping discretion and it says, to wield the enforcement power of the state. So isn't that just miraculous? Um, it has to be in harmony with the area and conformity with plans.
That's rather subjective.
Yeah, broad.
That's where y'all get to wield your authority as Board of Adjustment and say that this is not harmonious. And so the examples are like a church that wants to come to a residential neighborhood, right? Like if a church wants to come up in Twin Lakes. Um, y'all could say, eh, that does require a special use permit according to our ordinances. So you all would have to hear that, the group from the church would come and speak and y'all would make that determination. Cell phone towers. So if they want to put up a cell phone tower, that's a special use permit. So they would come to you guys and they would say, hey, this is what we want to do. And if they said, we're going to apply for a variance because we want it to go and be one and it says it can't go and be one, then we would say, no, that's a use variance. You need to go to the special, uh, use permit group and then we'll put it wherever it says it can go.
Right.
Yes. But I'll handle all that, y'all don't even have to worry about it.
There you go.
I'll do that for four. And then if they argue with you, we'll be back in the same place, it doesn't matter. But cell phone towers, uh, that is a utility substation, so things like that are in our ordinance already. And it already says it comes to you guys. And then adult oriented businesses. There are two types of adult oriented businesses. There are stores and there are other. Other means strip lovers. So retail and other. Y'all have a lot to talk about tonight when you go home.
Oh, yeah. I'm going to start all kinds of rumors here in town.
Whole training on strip clubs.
Tell y'all what we've talked about at the planning board.
That's right.
Strip club, radio tower.
Go around, Gordon, put it back on, tell her.
Can we designate whether it be a brass pole or an aluminum?
That is for the health and safety of.
But we can't talk about it in English with. It's ported.
That's right.
It won't be ported.
The requirements for special use permits are found in the general statutes, in the UDO. They're slightly specific and council deems those appropriate as necessary. Um, so then it's back to special use permits. Some special use permits, no, the TV went off. Okay, that was my fault. Some special use permits are statutorily protected. So like if they said to you, I want to put an adult business in town and you said, no, we don't have those in town, then we're going to get sued. So we have to have a place for them. We, right now.
And we're on close side road near the tracks dump?
They are only allowed in industrial spaces in, well, that's right. So any M one district is for, uh, adult oriented businesses. I think it's actually M one or M two.
You cannot ban something like that.
They're not, there are thirteen, and I don't know what all they are. But I know where they're at in statute, so I can go find them if I need to. Uh, there are thirteen statutorily protected, uh, uses. So they wrote the whole planning law and then underneath the special use part, they put, these thirteen things cannot be prohibited. They can be limited, but they cannot be expressly prohibited in the town.
Just those thirteen things?
Yep. Sexually ordered businesses is one, cell phone towers is one, um, utility.
The one's for the benefit of the community.
Well, yeah. But they, I guess there's lobbies, I don't know.
Oh, yeah.
That's what I could figure.
Oh, yeah.
But there are certain things that are protected. So you could make the cell phone tower look like a tree. You could do like.
So you can make it harder on them, we just can't tell them we can't do it.
You can't tell them they can't go anywhere. When I worked in Sneadale, we revised their ordinance to where it would fit in one piece of town, one parcel that we have. And that parcel was the middle of a manufacturing facility. And that's fine. Because it can go there, it's just occupied, so, oh, shucks.
Trying to negotiate that?
Yes.
Yeah, I'll sell that piece of property to you.
And well, that's what I was going to say, if they wanted to sell it, then that was, that's a free market issue that we have no control over. So. Um, you can do that, it's just they have to be able to go somewhere. And you see that a lot more with the county and cell phone towers. They actually just did that with cell phone towers. Maybe two months ago, they're going to put in a new cell phone tower over near the Nissan Place in Shelby. Um, back in there somewhere, they're putting in a new one. All right, this is going to go quick because we don't do this. Um, should it be against appropriateness or for historical properties? It's just the exterior of the bill. We have some historic properties in Boilings Springs, but this power has been taken from you by council and given to the county's Historic Preservation Commission. So if you want to join the HPC, you're more than welcome to. They meet the second Wednesday at four o'clock. I'm a member, that's not what you're trying to add. But it just has to do with treatment of historic properties, how they look. And we would issue and say, yes, this is a historic property and they would send that to the state. It's called SHPO, the State Historic Preservation Office. And they would apply for landmark status. Um, certificates of appropriateness are pretty easy. So up here, we have to do it by congruity. We can't cherry pick and it governs from the time that it's put up to the time it's taken down. So for congruity, it's like the Sesame Street song, one of these things is not like the other. Remember that?
It had the lines. That was after my time.
Was it? It's what, it always makes me think of, one of these things is not like the other. Um, so that's all that is. So it's pretty straightforward and you can look up here and you can tell one of these houses is not congruent with the other.
Yeah, the one doesn't have any cursing.
That's true. That's it. That's the only thing about it that was different. Sharp eye, Tom, I tell you what. Okay. I think now it says discussion questions, Noah. No, it says design standards versus guidelines. You have to develop the standards before they get to you. And they're standards because they're rigid, they're not optional. Guidelines are optional according to the statute. Just FYI.
Kind of like speed limits.
Yes. Those are guidelines. All right. In practice. And then the next one just says something about discussion questions. Okay. If y'all will flip to those, I promise, we're going to make this as painless as possible. And then I can send this to the state and they can be very happy. So just know that you're making a, a state bureaucrat very excited. The first one says Abby owns an empty lot in an existing neighborhood. The ordinance imposes a significant front yard setback on the lots in the neighborhood. Abby's lot slopes dramatically into the floodplain and stream at the rear property line. Abby's lot has a narrow fifteen feet buildable area between the front setback and the floodplain. She wants a variance. Can she make a case for it? Yes or no? I'm sorry, why or why not? And this is not if we would give one, it's just does she have a case? She does have one because of the floodplain.
Yep.
Carol owns a home in an existing subdivision. It was created in the early two thousands. Each lot has a limit on square footage. Uh, the structure of the driveway, with the structure of the driveway, Carol is over her allotment for impervious surface. Carol's summit that comes, she wants to put in a new parking pad so that he can park on it. Does she have a case for a variance? Nope. Because that is a personal circumstance. So bad news, Carol. All right. The second ones are about evidentiary considerations. A petition signed by twenty-five neighbors opposing the project and outlining ways in which it's out of character for the neighborhood. And it says, um, so I did need to read the directions to you. Uh, well, through the application evidentiary hearing, the board has gotten some evidence for each piece of evidence. Is it competent material substantial? Don't worry about that. But, um, can we accept it into the record? That's all we're doing. Is it coming in or not? So twenty-five neighbors opposing the project on a petition. Nope. Because that's a legislative function. We don't care what the neighbors think. Right? I know that sounds rude, but it's true. Because we're applying a standard. So that's inadmissible, it requires the competent component, needs cross-examination. A swim statement from a minister at Joe's Developers Church stating that he's an upsetting member of the community and he volunteers. No.
Can't cross-examine the paper.
Right. Can't cross-examine that piece of paper. And we don't really care that Joe's a community volunteer either. Because that has nothing to do with the standard. Uh, testimony from a neighbor in salon owner that the apartments will injure her property value.
You can have the testimony, but that don't mean it's going to be some danger.
You gotta. Yes.
You're an expert.
Yes, that's what it is. It requires expert testimony. So hers lacks competent support because she is not a reliable witness. A letter from Joe Developers Traffic Engineer about why, in her professional opinion, traffic impacts will be reasonably accommodated by the street improvements.
Yes.
Yes, that one's tricky. Because it is yes, but we would rather her come in, not write a letter. Because we can't cross-examine her. Um, but the state says, yes, there is some flexibility because we would rather her come in, but we can add it to the record. Uh, testimony from Mr. Neighbor that designed the building is awful.
No.
So that's not what we're doing. So that's not what we're doing. All right, last one, last three. This one is about board deliberating on the certificates of appropriateness, but really it's more about ex parte communication for all of them. So board member Jason, I had to change the names because believe it or not, they were Alan and Bill.
I do believe that.
I did not have to change Christine, but Alan was Jason and Bill was Chantel, so. Board member Jason mentioned our design standards are from the 70s, maybe the design doesn't meet the standards, but the standards are rubbish, we've got to approve this.
That's his opinion, you can't...
Yeah.
He may be right.
Right, he very, yeah, very well could be right, but that's not what we do here. We don't legislate. Board member Chantel, last Sunday I was chatting with neighbor at the church, he's concerned about the scale of the project and what's going to do to property value, I think that's important.
Nope, ex parte.
Yes, that's ex parte communication and that needs to be disclosed during the public hearing. Board member Christine poses the following conditions, and I'm just going to walk you through these because that's probably going to be easier. Additional vegetated buffering, that's fine because we can always make them screen. If Joe Developer sells the property, it's revoked, we cannot do that. So we do land use, so it's not bound to an individual. So any decision that we make goes with the land.
So let me ask you this, if on a, on a variance, if you offer a variance, is it, is it in perpetuity to that property?
Yep.
So we, you, you sell it to your wife, we give you the variance, she doesn't do anything with it for 20 years, Noah comes in, he buys property from you, and then he realizes, hey, I can do it and nobody else can stop me now.
Yep. Yes. The legal term for that is vested rights. And so they say that you're vested rights, we've extended vested rights in that piece of property to that land, to whatever property owner ends up acquiring it.
What if the ordinances and land uses have changed in that 20 years?
It doesn't matter. You're vested under the, you're grandfathered in. So that's why we're moving...
That goes back to don't issue variances very often.
Yes. Because it, that's why it gets very confusing and God bless, Noah has to keep up with all that. Thankfully, that's not me. And that's like conditional use permits. So we actually do conditional zoning districts. Anytime there's a high density development, we just did one last month, for the property on Lyman Street. That goes in as an addendum to our ordinance. So we in function legislatively amended that ordinance and council approved it, and now Noah has to keep that forever. Because all of those properties in that zoning district for the next 500 years go under that zoning designation until we change them.
So let me ask you this, on that property that we did, it was three large tracks. He subdevelops it out and starts deeding it off. Does it stay with it?
Yep, those are all still under that same, because it's the originating tract that we can trace it back to.
Well, that'd get tricky if somebody sells the other piece, that Gordon's Jewelry.
Yeah.
Because it didn't, it's not included.
Right. Yeah, it gets, and so the, the rule that applies to Gordon's Jewelry, which is right next door, is completely different than the rule that would, like if Gordon's Jewelry decided, hey, we don't want to be business with that house.
The developer building that house in development took it over.
Then he would not, he would have to have a different set of rules for that property.
Good luck, Noah.
Yeah, I'm telling you, it's, yeah, it's... And the other part of conditional zoning that I've talked to council about, but they like the route that we take. They like how every zoning district has for, high density has to be built individually. But I tell them, you know, y'all, I might leave something out by accident because I have to build every one of them from scratch. So I have a, obviously I have a template, but I mean, you know, in theory, we could forget something, we could leave something off, and once it's signed and voted on, then it's, you know, there's no amending it. Unless the, it has to be agreed by both parties. So, all right. Um, would you vegetated buffering, we said no to Joe. The approval is conditioned upon a contribution to the town's public art fund? No, we shouldn't do that. That is outside the scope and therefore unreasonable. If they want to do that, they can, but if we do much more than it's, goes beyond, the word is an exaction, which is where we can require you to sign on to sue, we can do that, but we can't make you give up money or property. That's a taking and it violates your Fifth Amendment right.
That's a lobbyist.
Yes. Yes. We have several of those. More provisions. Other than that, I'm done. I'm sorry. Noah, it went long.
Nope.
As we talk, a bureaucratic...
This happy little lark.
Just glad my tax dollars are being used so low.
Uh, any other discussions before we adjourn? Meeting's adjourned.
Thank you.
6:39. Tell me your...
D-bell. D-bell. I'm probably going to call you Odell because I know a lot of Odells.
Yeah, there's a lot of Odells.
Just don't call me Ring.
Ring?
Ring the bell.
My, my wife had a sorority sister, so I came up with that one.
Ring the bell.